We're going to jump right into reports to the board, student representative.
We've got a lot going on in the year, lots of fun. We've got Regents and Finals starting, we all love that. We've got all the fun awards at the end of the year. So we just had last week, I think it was last week, our junior and senior awards. And then Monday we had our athletic awards, so a lot of deserving scholarships, a lot of deserving hardworking kids. Very excited for everybody that they have those. The WTCC graduation was last night, it's nice, so that's a lot of deserving kids, a lot of hardworking students who do that, that's very exciting. We've got a bachelorette Friday, our graduation, we're still school walkthrough with like the middle school, third graders, seniors. It's going to be Wednesday and then graduation next Friday. Got a lot for sports. We have the baseball team making it to the quarterfinals, five players making it All-Star All League. Tennis, got sportsmanship award as well as first and second team All County Player of the Year, individual sportsmanship awards, honorable mentions. Softball had two, second team All Leagues. White football had two girls, made first team All-Star and a second team All-Star. And their courage, so it was like one lives in, one married, one so does girls, that was really cool. Oh, the girls track team were Division Two league and sectional champs. We had fifteen girls qualified for state queues and then eleven going to states. The eight hundred and fifteen, the three K, four by one, four by eight, hold wall record was broken, so that was really cool. As well as we had the Devon Slayer Memorial Award, CrossFit Ultimate Class C two. And then our weight training leagues track field champion, most outstanding performer female track athlete. It's also given out to two of our girls. And then to many first, second, third team All Teams. Our boys track team had Division Two champs, their four by four relay with two other individual events qualified for state queues. As well as their four by four record was broken and their eight hundred breaker pad. As well as first and second team All League All-Star people, that's true. So had a lot of fun, a lot of content last few months or so.
Well, you did pretty good at states if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I did.
Awesome, congratulations. Thanks for the report, those great players. Reports from these are administrators. Thank you very much.
The team has noticed that I'm actually going to reverse order, so actually we're in third. Surprise! So, I'm just working, our, the business office is working on closing big down for the year. We have our audit coming up about thirty in July, so it's a very busy time for us. As far as, we have some open positions in transportation. In the fall we will have one driver position open and a sub driver position open. We also have two four, four hour monitor positions open. In facilities, we have a floating cleaner position open. And for the cafeteria, one person is going to be retiring, so in the fall we will have an open position there.
From the office of the Assistant Superintendent Francis.
Good evening. So I did hand to you two reports, our social studies and our science program reviews. We concluded both of those reviews this year, which was very exciting. And really recommendations for both revolved around aligning curriculum and instruction, K-12. Our science team wanted to also focus on some professional development, knowing that their standards are fairly new and require a more in-depth analysis than maybe some of our other content areas at this time. Our social studies program review team really wanted to focus, they didn't necessarily split out the actual content area, but in the report you'll see that they wanted to focus on curriculum instruction and resource allocation, just to make sure that our teachers have the instructional resources, K-12, that they need in order to provide high-quality instruction. So if you have any questions about those, I'm happy to answer them. And then also within our K-12 programming for teaching English to speakers of other languages, we are in the process right now of trying to secure an ENL teacher. And so we're crossing our fingers that we can get a highly qualified moment.
We are, I just want to thank you all, the community schools coordinators. We've got some wonderful summer activities coming up that are being planned for the kids. And they've been shared, but I don't have parents for it, but they will be shared again. But we've got summer camps that are going to happen at the elementary school, the middle school, and a parent, a student, and/or adult event around a program called Mind Wayfinder to help find resources for families up at the high school. So they are busy planning and organizing those, so those invitations will go back out tomorrow also, just to see if we can continue to grow our enrollment or that. And then we also, hopefully tonight, we'll be approving a field trip coordinator for the summer. Kathy Abdnazir is in theory going to be our field trip support coordinator. We just received a grant from the Rochester Area Community Foundation, our vitality grant for arts education, and she is going to be organizing some activities for the kids themselves. From high school, Dr. Schreider.
I'm going to kick you back off here first and say that we're really excited. We're doing some shifting around the building and room locations. And next year we'll have a dedicated space for our community school program. So we're really excited to really offer, turning this, what is a classroom right now, into a space that will house supplies, snacks, also serve as like a parent and community development space. In terms of hiring, we are feeling confident that we have a library and nurse candidate lined up. Our application process for that right now, interview process. And we also currently have a pursuit for a long-term special ed teacher for someone who's going to leave in the fall, who will be returning in winter, so we are looking for that. And earlier I shared the timeline for graduation with you all, that planning process is kind of in the wrapping up phase of this plan. We're going to almost time implement, so I shared with you the timeline. We have a guest speaker, it is Courtney Hill, who is a West Point graduate, a 11th and 14th graduate of our district, who currently in the Jack Kilgarean in the military. And this coming Friday we will share in more detail plans with families regarding their ring plan to get solos next.
Dr. Schreider, thank you for all your work on graduation. It's like the small wedding of the community, so appreciate all your time and energy. Okay, Kay Taylor from the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, the middle school is in our, coming into celebration season. So last week we had our award ceremony, which was quite lovely. We had that on the front lawn, the weather cooperated. We have some upcoming things this, next week. Our tradition of the pride race, which this year is the last day at school. We will keep an eye on the, on the weather because it's supposed to be a hot day, so we'll keep posted. But we also have our field days on Tuesday, which is a little bit of a cooler day. So our students are gearing up, they're excited, so we're in celebration mode. However, as an update to the building, we are already thinking about next year as we wrap up this year. So in terms of hiring, with Dr. Schreider, we are working in conjunction. We are currently in the middle of the process of searching for a librarian, a combined middle school and high school librarian. We watched some demo lessons today, we have one more to do. And then at the middle school, we have secured a fifth grade teacher who is on the docket today. So we are very excited about the new forward. We may have some other alternate positions, but this is where we are right now.
Thank you for helping. And that's been at least, and I think maybe the final board report.
I don't know. I'm through, because I'm usually worse. I'm going to piggyback off Kay, we also had some special events today with field day. We expanded field day to include some fun activities, including a blow-up obstacle course. It was very exciting. We kicked field day off with a, I believe a new tradition, I don't know, until Scotty's going to have to carry that. Fifteen of our, I mean, you're there. Fifteen of our staff members wore those blow-up animal costumes, I'm not sure what to call them, inflatable costumes. And we ran three heats, competitive races this morning. Ellen had a bullhorn and a gold flag. The students loved every single second of it. I'd probably say our great new fourth grade teacher, Ms. Fillmore, was the victor. And it was a great way to start the day. Big shout out to Dan Swinman and Abby DeFisher for playing a wonderful field day. And back at Denny and Lawrence Gulli for organizing fun, including securing the blow-up obstacle course. Thank you very much for PCSA's help. They also donated sunglasses for all the kids, it was wonderful. We also have flag day on Friday, one of my favorite days. Big shout out to American Legion. We had twelve representatives from American Legion here, it was a beautiful day. Beautiful sunshine, lots of kids, and lots of celebration. We're looking forward to the seniors coming to the elementary building next week to do their senior walk while we can wish them well. And my hiring update is, from the elementary, we have secured a third grade teacher, Samina Jepertine. We have another third grade opening we're still looking for. We secured a longtime sole contributor to the first grade. We're about to secure a speech position. And, and now we're looking for a long-term set art position, you saw that she's extending her child really. So we're in good shape. That is set.
Thank you very much, Ellen. It's my pleasure to welcome guests, as the first speaker, as a facet of the superintendent's report. And for Francis, we're not using this as part of the time. This is not part of my time. They timed you. So it's my pleasure to welcome Laura Saksby Lynch up to the podium to say a few words, and thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. So good evening, everyone. As Bridget said, I'm Laura Saksby Lynch, I'm Ellen's sister. And my husband John Lynch is with me, and Ellen's my sister Theresa Northrop, and her fiancee Carrie Smith are here. We are a family of five kids who are like as thieves. And our brother and his wife, John and Nancy, were with our older sister Kathleen tonight, but they are here in spirit. And I will say to you that this whole thing started in a family, it was a wake, actually, we were all at dinner. And Theresa said, Ellen, when's your last school board meeting? And it went pretty quickly from there to we're all going. So we're here to represent the family. I don't know how well anybody knows Ellen, I know I have two minutes, I read the agenda. So our mom and dad are deceased, but our mother was a school teacher. And her mother, our maternal grandmother, was a one-room schoolhouse teacher. So their education path is one that Ellen followed. Our father was a fifteen-year board member of the Victor School Board, and he was a founding member of the Ford County Board Association. So education is deeply embedded in our family. And Ellen was the one of the five of us that chose to pursue that as a career. And I think one of the most special things is when the passion we have in life marries with our profession, what a wonderful gift that is. And Ellen, for as long as I can remember, has had a deep passion for education and for children. And she married that with a career that spanned forty years, thirty-seven of them in this school district. Ellen is, we hear about Ellen. We don't get to see Ellen in her work environment, but we hear about Ellen. And Ellen is a champion, she's a cheerleader, she's a mentor, and she is a staunch advocate for children. Among our siblings, we have eight children. And I can tell you that the lives of our nieces, Ellen's nieces and nephews, our children, are richer for having Ellen. And I would dare say that the school district and the children that she has touched, and I'm sure it's hundreds and might be thousands in her career, that those children's lives are richer, brighter, and better. Whether they cross paths with her in a classroom, when she was still teaching, or whether they crossed paths with her on the hallway, and they never had her as a teacher, or maybe when they made it to the principal's. But at the end of the day, Ellen is the consummate professional. She is unfailingly committed to the betterment of the children that she has in her care and has had for forty years. We are incredibly proud of our sister. And I want you to know that the school district, I hope, takes with it tonight a deep and abiding love and appreciation for our sister and for your elementary school principal. Thank you for the opportunity to share it with us.
That was the greatest three minutes.
Thank you, very welcome.
And I will be breathing, and I will ask for a speech just then. We'll save that for later. It is with deep gratitude and admiration that we do recognize Ellen Saksby tonight on the occasion of her retirement and her final attendance at a board and education meeting.
Yeah, that will celebrate him, sorry.
With thirty-seven years of dedicated service to education in this district, including twenty-one in pre-K-12 administration, Ellen has been a steadfast leader, mentor, and advocate, whose impact will be felt for generations. Her unwavering commitment to this district and the broader community has been evident in every aspect of her work. From championing student-centered initiatives to strengthening partnership with families and local organizations, Ellen has helped build a school culture rooted in excellence, equity, and care. Her leadership has empowered staff, uplifted our students, and brought meaningful lasting change to a district that you so passionately serve. As we celebrate your remarkable career, Ellen, we extend our heartfelt thanks for your dedication, vision, and service to the Williamson Central School District. And we'll give her another round of applause. And for the board members who were hoping that was it, it's not. Okay, I did ask that all of our administrators provide you a brief update on our hiring status. I am actually very grateful, because guess what? My hiring is finished. And my last hire is actually here in the room this evening. As you know, it's been a relentless hustle, May and June. We've all been very busy wrapping up twenty-four, twenty-five, also planning and preparing for twenty-five, twenty-six. It's my pleasure to have a candidate here this evening who's going to be the replacement for our beloved Ellen Saksby. Our candidate this evening has over twenty years' experience in educational leadership. He currently serves as Director of Student Services and previously as the Director of Special Education and People Personnel Services for the Unfield Central School District. Mr. Dreschler's leadership experience and his student-centered approach make him an ideal fit for Williamson Central School District. It is important to note that Mr. Dreschler went through a rigorous hiring process that included multiple rounds of interviews. In addition to the paper vetting of candidates which happened on May thirtieth, there were screening interviews conducted by our administrative cabinet on June third, followed by stakeholder semifinalist interviews, which were comprised of parents, teachers, clerical and support staff, and administration. Those happened on June fifth. Finalist interviews, if that wasn't enough, he got to spend an hour with me on June tenth. In addition to interviews, our candidates had to complete an on-demand writing prompt. They had to deliver presentations to our committees on their approach to student management, to our stakeholder committees. References were checked, and feedback was collected from all of our stakeholders. It is my pleasure to say that overall confidence ratings in our candidates' ability to serve in this vital role were overwhelmingly positive and unanimous. It is my pleasure this evening to recommend Dr., Dr., sorry, Scott Dreschler to the role of our next elementary school principal for the Williamson Central School District. Of course, I'll move on that in just a few moments during the business portion of the meeting. But welcome, Scott, we thrilled to give you here this evening. I have a couple other updates. I do want to give a quick update to our community on the bell-to-bell ban and the policy development as required by regulation. As I've been sharing with the community and with the Board of Education, we are required by regulation to have a policy in place by August first. We are in good shape, and in fact, we'll have a first read by the Board of Education this evening around our proposed policy. Important to note that there is stakeholder feedback embedded within the policy language. In addition to stakeholder meetings that happen internally, our building principals lead stakeholder meetings with our faculty and staff, with our students, those happen between May and June. There was also an administrative council meeting where all of the entirety of the administrative team had an opportunity to provide feedback. And then we also pushed out a couple different opportunities for our families to weigh in via in-person community forum and/or a Google form survey, which many families did weigh in on, and they provided some feedback. So I'm very pleased to present the policy draft reading this evening. I will openly share with you a couple facets of what we anticipate, how we'll handle the bell-to-bell ban, and that is that we anticipate onsite storage locations being for grades three through 12 in loggers, and then for those students not in grades three through 12, where we would have classroom bins and/or designated repositories in our main offices. As far as parent area contact, that seems to be the issue or concern that most of our families are having. We're trying to create multiple and very different modes by which our families will still be able to communicate with their students. We will have main office phone available. Our classroom phones are available. If there's an urgent reason why a student needs to make a phone call, they will be able to use a classroom phone. We are looking into advanced functionality of Parentsware. Our hope is that Parentsware will be able to open up a means by which our parents can directly communicate with their students via Parentsware. That functionality does not yet exist. Hopefully that will happen. For our middle school and high school students, 10th period is absolutely an open opportunity for communication using their devices as well as our buses. And then I am going to explore and see if there's any way to do a messaging system via our website. Lastly, I would just note that we have not yet completely wrapped up how we will address issues with student management. This will be a code of conduct potential infraction if there's, you know, issues with kids having their cellphones out. We're still working on that, and we fully anticipate being prepared to present to the community on or around August 1st as required by regulation. It wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't provide a capital improvement project and facilities update. I'm sure all of you are very eager to hear about that. A question was raised about district landscaping. I do want folks to know that prior to graduation, we do hope to have all of the beds taken care of. Our facilities team is currently working on that right now so that they'll look nice for graduation. Our commencement ceremony next Friday. Tresco panels in the middle school are finally being installed. If you're not sure what those are, those are the red panels that are covering the plywood that was painted black. They're looking very nice, worth 60% completion at this juncture. Elementary roof, mentioned to you, they're very concerned about whether or not we were going to be able to wait for our next capital project to wait to actually have that roof fixed or replaced. We do believe at this juncture, after having our architects and other construction folks go through and assess, that if we put pavers up, they will be okay as we await pre-referendum vote in December of '25 for the next capital improvement project. That will be the first thing we address. Our plan is to have the architects have that all drawn out. So upon state ed approval of our proposal, that could be something we could potentially be addressing in spring of '26. So again, the pavers are the solution while we await actual replacement of the roof that needs to be replaced. The elementary school gym floor was brought to my attention as a safety concern. At this juncture, our facilities department are looking at two creative solutions before we have to think about going to state ed to do an emergency project. They're looking at sanding down the actual top coating and/or there's a product that you potentially could apply that will address that. I don't have confirmation at this juncture if we're going to be successful, but I do want you to know that we're currently exploring that. High school gymnasium floor, looks beautiful. However, unfortunately, it is subpar as far as the work that was done, and we will not re, we are still not accepting the work. We anticipate the contractor coming back this summer. Plumbing issue at the high school also was addressed. I want you to know that that was completed. We did not have to disrupt any of the memorial trees. And then lastly, very excited to share with you that we are nearing completion with development of the scope of work for the next capital improvement project, the 2025 project. We will have our architects here to present to the Board of Education on July 2nd, our next board, July 3rd, sorry. July 3rd, our next board of education meeting. And then lastly, just want to touch on the fact that we do have some other moves happening. I know a number of our building principals mentioned that. We have some other moves happening. Myself, I'm going to be actually moving over to the high school. I'm going to take the senior lounge space. Dr. Snyder has been messaging to faculty, staff, and students that the senior lounge space likely would not be open. Last year, we had some inconsistent appropriate use of the space. We also identified an alternate location if necessary if he decides to open that back up. Rachel Libertor and her team, so Dawn and Annette, they're going to be moving over to the elementary school effective July 1, and they're going to be now housed in People Personnel Services, we pulled over at the elementary school. There are a number of other moves across the district. Two most notable would just be we have an elementary classroom. Megan Berga at the elementary special class, she's moving over to the middle school, and she's actually going to take the records room, which is right next door. So we're opening up a space to have it become instructional, which we think is wonderful for teaching and learning. And lastly, Lindsay Clummer over at the high school, our MISA room, that's going to actually now be rehoused over in the physics room. So we're happy about that move for them as well. And that concludes the superintendent's report for the evening. Thank you very much. Fran, how long was that?
Five minutes.
Thank you. Five minutes.
Eight forty-seven.
Nine. Nine. Nice try. Did he get pressure?
Five.
I'll tape it for you. Okay. Thank you. All right, district committee reports. We had two district committees, buildings and grounds, and district techs. I'm going to name significant work from those. Okay. District events, it is end of the year, so it's a lengthy list. Breakfast of champions, May 30th. Interns are available, May 30th. Festival of the arts, K-1 and 2, June 3. Festival of the arts for 3 and 4 was June 5. Seven-Eight Spring Concert, June 5. Grandparents' Day was June 6. Seniors and seniors breakfast, June 6. High school spring concert and awards, June 10. Junior, senior awards night, June 11. And the athletic awards ceremony was June 16. Fantastic programs, the recognition for our students in all of those. I have nothing to report from four-county school board association, which leads us to PTSA. Do I have anything to report for us?
I do. So I'm writing, but it's on my phone. So we're good. So first, I just want to say I want a volunteer, even though I'm not at the event, because it's the last meeting of the year, and I worked on the first meeting of the year, so it seemed appropriate. So we are finishing out our year, and we have been at the elementary school festival of arts, both the K through 2 and 3 through 4. The 3 through 4 one was really fun because we also had to have volunteers at the Seven-Eight Concert, and several of us have been at some grades 3 and 4. So it was a fun one year, Ellen. We did have a group of volunteers at Grandparents' Day out that morning. As Ellen mentioned, we provided funding for a bounce house, sunglasses, and we also received a donation from Lightness to cover the cost of popsicles and suckers for all the students. And there was a small group of volunteers there as well. And then for the middle school, we are providing funding for a bounce house for your field day. And then we will also have volunteers at Fridays.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Since it's the end of year, I wanted to give a recap, so by the numbers. We finished this year with 70 and over members. We're pretty sure that's like the highest we've ever had. So Bridget, if I could talk in front of the teachers again?
You got it.
Awesome. We had volunteers at 33 different events this year, and that's actually PTA member volunteers. PTA member hours, we have over 400 hours of volunteer hours just from our PTA members. And then you add other volunteers with us that are not members, probably another hundred more. So it was kind of cool to see that and how much we've done. And I don't know the number from last year.
You know what? I wasn't asking questions tonight.
Last night, we had our final meeting for the year. We approved our meeting schedule for the next school year. We'll continue to have it on Saturday, Tuesday of the month. Also, as I had mentioned, we had several high school members interested in our new high school filling up. Two of them were able to attend last night, so they got to see what they're eating themselves into, and they will seem excited to come back, so we're happy for that. We also had officer elections for this next year. Ms. Patty Kimberly is retiring from her officer position. So Jen Juby is stepping in and has taken the secretary role. Alicia Peetz is going to continue to be the treasurer. Bisha Copeland will be our vice chair. And then I was re-elected for the chair going into next year. And then we also are looking at our events. We are looking at the last week of August to do our kindergarten night. This will be our third year doing that event. And then we are also going to have people add school schedules.
Yes, which I think will be a little later this year, like 28-ish.
And of course, our new charter tree, that we picked up a couple years ago, so that's already getting, we can start getting sponsors for that now.
Thank you. Awesome. Great stuff. Yeah. Really impressive, considering not that long ago we're talking about this man.
Yeah, it's a remarkable turnaround.
Nice job, Lisa. And to all of the members who helped make that happen. All right, board reports. We're getting to CSC summaries. Any motion to approve the CSCP summaries?
Sumo.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Passes for zero.
I need a motion to approve the main charter reports.
Sumo.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Passes for zero.
Lawless report, this is a written report, as is the spring sports report. Do you have any comments or questions?
And a quick update on the sports report. Ryan could not be here this evening, but we did want you to know, we are shifting our practice and trying to have all coaching vacancies posted for spring, and that way, when it comes time for the reorganization meeting, we will have all of our candidates' recommendations for you. And at this time, we have 10 of 11 of all coaching positions prepared for recommendation. 11 of 12 positions for the winter season ready for recommendation, and all 12 coaching positions for the spring season ready for recommendation. They will all be there here for you July 3. Positions remain open for the rest of them until June 27. We also wanted you to know that we are following a formal interview process. If there's a one-man-a-pendant interview of all candidates for each of the coaching vacancies.
Thank you.
And they were posted interviewing.
And external. That's correct. Thank you. All right, our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 5B through 5G as recommended by the superintendent.
Sumo.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? That passes for zero.
I need a motion to approve the summer appointments and approvals as presented.
Sumo.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Stane?
Aye.
Close?
Hold on. Making sure I'm clicking the right people.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a little quick tonight.
I know, I'm trying. Keep it on.
You are an official. You are an official. I'll take the opportunity for you to know that.
Congratulations. Our consent agenda has been broken into four different pieces tonight because we have some extensions coming up, so.
Normally, our meetings are a good solid two to three hours, but we're trying to stream like.
We can't wait for your first official to be a three-hour one.
Right. Right? So you want to.
Yeah, we just want you to want to come back.
Otherwise, they'll just be disappointed.
Kelly, did you give us okay?
Did we do I or we just do H?
We just do H.
Okay. I'm ready.
And I abstained.
All right, yes, got it.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the summer appointments and approvals as presented.
Sumo.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Stane?
Abstain.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you very much. Under J, I need a motion to approve the summer appointments and approvals as presented.
Sumo.
Second. Oh.
He's a second. Or let him second that one for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Stane?
Push me.
Thank you, Fran. Okay. Lastly, I need a motion to approve the summer appointments and approvals as presented.
Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Stane?
Abstain.
That's great. Thank you very much for that. That passes for zero. Okay. Moving into bold business. Kelly, got all that okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to approve the second reading and adopt the following policies in the list below.
Sumo.
Aye.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes for zero.
I need a motion to approve first reading of updated policies, 6470 travel conference guidelines.
Sumo.
Any discussion?
This is just an effort to clarify and alleviate any confusion specific to travel within districts, so we're just trying to make sure folks know that it's really travel by district, or the travel of efforts.
Great for clearing that up. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
That passes for zero.
I need a motion to approve first reading of the new policy, 7410 use of internet-enabled devices during school day.
Sumo.
Any discussion?
I have some discussion really quickly. I'll not take, you didn't tie me on this one. I have drafted a letter to the governor from the board. I want to read just a snippet of the letter, and I wanted to also ask Veronica if you could assist us with the letter writing campaign for PTSA possibly, for parents to send similar letters should they feel they're interested in doing so. I think that this policy is something that unfortunately leaves the district in a place of really struggling to figure out how to support this. I'm not opposed to a ban of cellphones during instructional time, but I am opposed to how the governors roll this out and put it all on the backs of the local districts. And so I want to read this really quickly. I'm not going to read the entire letter, just the first paragraph and some highlights. Dear Governor Hopel, on behalf of the Williamson Central School District Board of Education, I write to express our deep concerns regarding the recently enacted bell-to-bell cellphone ban under Section 28 of 3 of New York State Education Law. While we wholeheartedly share your commitment to reducing classroom distractions and fostering student engagement, this mandate is currently written, places significant and unfunded burdens upon local school districts without providing the necessary guidance or resources for effective implementation. And three of the highlights that I call out to in this letter, as mentioned, the unfunded mandate piece, we have to figure out how to store them, how to protect them, what to do without them having cellphones. Just a lack of clarity and guidance. It's very vague around how we're going to enforce it, the disciplinary framework, and teacher-administrator discretion, and it becomes very difficult. And lastly, an impact on school operations. I'm very concerned with what this is going to do to our administrative team and the teachers that have to help and force this during the day as well. And so I am asking the rest of the board to sign this letter in support of letting the governor know that while we support our efforts, we don't support it in this manner.
Just loosely written?
Yes.
It's a nice way to put it, I think.
Well, that's the nicest I can put it. A lot of republicans, so. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? That passes for zero.
And I will return this gets up to you guys tomorrow. And Veronica, I also copy you on it, so if you want to take any pieces of that, and I don't know if you've got a burger letter or anything based on PTSA 4, but essentially
And I don't know if you've ever heard of a letter writing piece with PTSA four, but essentially it's a draft of the district sort of position and making them available to our families that would like to, um, sign in agreement to have the district kind of stand on that. And then they get mailed in a batch to our state officials. Thank you.
If you wanted to do more.
Right. Four hundred and two hours.
I'll just go over to Jeff's house and get it done. He already offered to do it, which I'm retired.
You can post that on our website. And then I'll let it go.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I think that should be on our website, we should sell that out and help you all help me deal. Uh, okay. Twenty-five, twenty-six, the board needing to propose its pace. Have, yes, you have a.
Yeah, so I asked to pull this back out here because I'm still beginning. And I think originally, our workshop was supposed to be mid-July, so we didn't have a regular meeting scheduled in July, other than the reorg. And, um, because we moved the workshop to early in July, I guess what sparked it was, you know, things like the cellphone policy having to be replaced by the office first. Things that need to be done, but because we don't have a meeting other than the reorg in July, it was patrolling, start looking at it. So my question is, do we want to have a meeting in July? Because otherwise, we're basically going home with nothing. And I think Jeff, you said you're not going to be here the second, right?
No, I'll be out there.
So I'm, I'm wondering, do you want to do one like the twenty-third instead of waiting for August sixth? And then maybe with the August sixth, going to the thirteenth, if there's space part in August.
I, I'm confident that we are positioned for the, uh, I'm sorry, for the August first deadline, meaning we'll have policy, we'll actually use that agreed at our reorg meeting. As far as the operational side of it, the what are, how are, is the district in implement, obviously the team, the administrative team is going to need some time to put together process protocol and communication that has to go up on August first on our website. I also feel very confident and I'm in a good position to do so. So I'm not really concerned about that piece of it, getting the policy taken care of, like the proposal that I brought in today, I feel really confident about it reflects the voice of our stakeholders. Um, the only concern I have potentially would be hiring. Uh, you know, I don't know that you'll have all of the hiring vacancies that made the team present to you tonight, around what vacancies we still have, that they'll have that done for July second. But that being said, I don't, I can't think of any of them that are that urgent that they could wait until the first meeting in August. Unless it's teacher for onboarding and new teacher orientation. But that said, we do have a protocol by which we can have emergency appointment.
Um, but I, uh, do you always think I won't be in the office?
I won't be there.
Oh.
I wonder if you want, because that's your.
Maybe we should move on.
Yes.
Maybe we should move on?
Let's move that one?
Yeah. Just, you want to move it up or you want to move it down?
Down is better to be, but, or up, I don't know. But, but already, it would be better.
Uh, so if we move it. If we move it to the thirteenth, that, I mean, there's only a week in between the two meetings. Potentially, three days, but like a week to prepare.
July thirtieth would be better than August.
I can do July thirtieth.
I'm out of district.
You're gone.
That's the week I'm out of district.
Twenty-third. Next is the twenty-third.
So can we go on the twenty-third, it's if the sixth? Or does that.
Yeah.
Present a problem with stuff that has to be done for new teacher or hire or something like this?
Well, why don't we do the twenty-third, we can keep the sixth on. If we need a meeting, it's there, we can always cancel it.
Okay.
Because if we're going to have three, that's a four, and we need to get some approvals through to, for hiring, we can just have a quick meeting for hiring.
Sarah, you just.
They, they all three of us are going to go on the sixth.
Wait, Jeff, you're on the second.
No, I'm, you're on the sixth.
No, you are.
Okay.
Sarah, I know you'll be a new board member, are you?
Uh, I, I think all of those dates were moving.
July twenty-third works for you? Okay. And then I did have a proposal since we're adding some things on for the July second meeting, would anyone be opposed to starting at five-thirty instead of six?
Are you going to do that all time?
Well, if we're having a presentation from SCI and some other things, it's a reorg meeting.
Smoke of work.
Jamie, how do you feel about that? About you?
The same as Ellen. From Ellen's deck.
I'd like for you to send a picture of that, you better.
I don't think anyone's starting on there. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with that.
Jasper's, oh, you're not going to be here.
I'm not going to be here, so, you know what, you guys should go make it an eight-hour meeting, order.
Sarah does five-thirty, Sarah does five-thirty works for you?
Yeah.
I like that. Four-thirty and being shut down on a night.
Cal, will you change that hour now or everybody?
Yeah, I'll.
You going to order dinner for him?
I'll do it right now.
I won't, but I don't think he's in spirit.
Don't you zoom in?
No, that poses more problems. Then you got to host the meeting, you got to know the locations at, if it's.
We tried that before.
It's, it's hard, and then I have to go into the lobby of a hotel in case.
In case we.
Someone shows up at that hotel on that day, that it doesn't make sense, but.
Any other changes for the rest of the year?
Not that I know of.
Alright, can we jump into new business? Alright, I need a motion to approve the donation of six hundred dollars from the Williamson PTSA to the elementary school for the use of district.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement between Williamson Central School District and employee.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the extension of Angela DeFisher as board vice president through July one and twenty-two twenty-five. Motion to, no, I just read the same twice. Motion to approve that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement between Williamson Central School District and employee.
So.
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. Now I need a motion to approve the extension of Angela DeFisher as board vice president through July one and twenty-two twenty-five.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Williamson Faculty Association through June thirtieth, twenty-two twenty-six regarding sports supervisor.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Williamson Faculty Association through June thirtieth, twenty-two twenty-six regarding stipend increase for the tech intern coordinator.
So.
Second.
Any discussion?
I should have let you move on that one, Brandon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Williamson Faculty Association through June thirtieth regarding a new e-sports club.
So.
Right.
Any discussion?
Haven't this been like, the question, you have the computer.
I think they've been exploring. Now they're ready to rock and roll. I'm excited for it.
Great.
Yeah, we have, we have a teacher who is really passionate about it. Carrie Miller is really excited about it, and she's rallied.
Oh, it's great.
Some kids are on it. So last year, she volunteered to do it. It's terrible this year.
Great.
Thank you, Carrie Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the request as listed from N. employee.
So.
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the year-end fund balance transfers as of June thirtieth, twenty-two twenty-five add attached to us.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? No.
Um. So we will be, um, it's authorization to fund the capital reserve and, um, the travel, uh, transportation reserve and the ERX reserve.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I need a motion to approve the math expressions as the K-five math program beginning twenty-two twenty-five, twenty-two twenty-six.
So.
Right.
Any discussion? Awesome.
Yeah.
We're ready for a new program.
Yeah.
They're good? All in favor? Alright. Close? That passes four zero. That was the quickest, uh, group that we've gotten, right, Jeff? Um, we're ready for a new program, so that's exciting. Uh, motion to approve the agreement between Williamson Central School District and the fifty-year expert of the sex pees intern coordinator.
So.
Second.
There is a seventeen-year or something.
So she's leaving, abstaining. Can you believe that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That passes four zero. I say congratulations, but I'm not sharing it with you all.
Thank you, Ellen.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Happy to.
Student celebrations at board meetings, is the discussion?
Yes, uh, we have received notification that, uh, they did some clarification around student privacy during board meetings. And so what's at question is that when we have students here and we have name placards, if we're saying their names and we have images, we're actually providing multiple points of, uh, data specific to students. And so we are being advised that we should no longer be, uh, executing our student celebrations in the way that we have been historically. So our proposal would be potentially that we would still exercise the student celebrations, but that we would turn off the live streaming during the celebrations and potentially have something that's up for our viewers that says student celebrations occurring right now, and obviously we'd have to have a communication, teach fees with the community. Um, that is our creative solution to, to allow for us to still have the student celebrations while protecting their privacy.
But so, for example, if they have our project and they come in and we present something to them.
That's correct.
Spring sports.
Sports, we can.
That brings, it sucks the joy out of everything we do.
What's the difference between posting our Facebook and having Instagram?
Right, yeah. So you're saying we can't even put photos of students online?
Well, we've been advised.
We have been advised that during our board meetings, and most districts have to leave away from the live streaming of the student segments or they're hosting the celebrations previous to the live streaming. So you would have the celebration at the front end of the board meeting and then start the live streaming of your actual business, that you would still engage in celebration.
Do parents opt in or opt out if we choose to do something different?
It is our understanding, we're being counseled, we are being counseled to basically change our practice.
I'm, I'm.
To discuss student privacy. Because of multiple points of data around the student.
Kid's name, what school they go to, what they're interested in, how to find them outside of their grandparent's.
Correct. It's just a lot.
It's a bit correct. Miswa has concerns with.
Don't we put that on Facebook?
No, not usually.
No, not multiple points.
It's usually, like sometimes it's.
Put a picture, but maybe not a name.
Correct. And then you have student work, potentially their work is also presented. So what's interesting is they did push out a clarifying communication with our ex officio student board members. Uh, they would not be considered a violation of student privacy just because they are not presenting on their own work. The student is present, but they're not sharing any of their work. So there have been multiple communications in our list, this has been ongoing. And Kelly, many of you will have to address it for next year, we wanted to initiate the conversation with you now, thinking about we're going to have to have a plan for next year.
So. And I'm not trying to just expand things, so does that mean that there's a soccer game, announcer can't say, hey, someone just scored a.
It's a little bit different because this is live streamed, and frankly, it's YouTube, it's like a YouTube video that anyone can access.
Right, I know, but you can livestream sporting events.
We can't.
So are we, are we just expanding something to our.
But we're not putting those on our views, that, that would be a whole different conversation.
Yeah, our words are ways.
You're just.
I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to get a lot more guidance, I think, like.
I just want to, like, you're right, that's, I just want to clarify that too, right? We're being advised, it doesn't mean we have to here to. Should, but.
What's, what's the liability?
I'll come, I will come back with greater clarity, I guess, around the path, that we are being counseled in many, many districts already.
We've pursued some communications as well, I just.
I would open it up to a lot of, a lot.
I really struggle with like, that's the joy and the work that we all do is celebrating kids and like. I hate to remove any piece of that in any way. Our kids deserve it, but I understand if it is a privacy concern, I understand if parents have any shared as well, but that is, that's what we're here for.
To your question, Jeff, thinking about a sports event, you know, that might be live streamed, you might hear announcer saying the name of a player who just, you know, hits a goal in that, something like that. But, um, you're not actually seeing potentially like the, like, I just don't think it's, it, we are live, live streaming, they're just sitting right there, they're up here showing their work. I'm saying the name of the thing.
And I can see it just going that direction.
And they have the student board present.
Well, we do live stream, like, uh, sports awards.
Or you name like a soloist, his name is used.
Yep.
Would we not be able to?
All the time at concerts.
So I think we should circle back to.
We wanted to initiate the conversation with you because again, other districts are already going void, they already have, frankly, stopped live streaming the student celebrations. I can get further guidance, uh, for you, but I can't tell you councils or recommend it.
And, well, we don't, we, we have a district not doing whatever the district does.
Unless it's the law.
Unless it's the law, but it.
Never stop at lunch.
But there's also, but we, but we have, there's also work, every single district in such and prior has decided that, that they're going to do something, like, no, we're not doing that.
So there were number, and I can't tell you where it happened in the state, there were a number of issues specific to board meetings and the live streaming and student privacy issues concerned. And that's what prompted the whole movement to say we got to shift away. Uh, I don't.
I guess I'd be curious to change, um, maybe it's about, can parents like opt in or opt out, whatever the case.
We can certainly explore that.
To enable us to still do that. And if you have a group of kids, like I know when we do the art ones, it's multiple children. So if you have a group and someone opts out, then fine, you just don't want to dream that whole thing. But if everyone who's being celebrated chooses to opt in, can we still do that?
I guess that would be my, because it does suck all the joy out of it.
My memory serves me, it was about, it's, it's more than just directory information, it's actual student work. And because you're actually sharing the student work, that would be like, you know, uh, me as a teacher talking about how, uh, a student is performing in a class outlaw. So it's basically like, you're sharing directory information, but you're also sharing information about those students.
But we're not sharing that the piece of art was correct, right?
Right.
You're still sharing it. I hear you, I understand and appreciate your position. Don't kill the messenger.
No, this is something that we can definitely look at and discuss further.
And we will, I, you definitely.
This is a good. Healthy board.
Yeah.
Conversation.
You know what else that makes me question? Our graduation, one of the things I have always loved about it is the individual commentary, if you will, as kids receive their diplomas. If that's not sharing student information and we live stream that. That's one I, that's a hell I would die on, we should not, not, we should not stop live streaming it because people can't look for that because they can't call.
Don't enough to get to remember.
Yep.
And we should stop that practice because that's what makes Williamson, Williamson.
That's right.
But you didn't expect this kind of.
Like, that's a hell of a.
I guess, I guess that's why. But that's why you're opening, right?
Right.
Because girls suck.
Your opening, your opening is nonsense. To me. I'll be, I'll be bold about it.
I'll tell them the board meeting is just to do public comment about this one. We're here because of the kids and the good stuff that they do.
Yep.
And celebrating them, and so. I know we're not going to stop celebrating this, but publicly we are.
Don't kill the messenger.
No, no, we're not, not you.
Well, I, I think you need to have an awareness that was the intent this evening was to present that to you with a potential solution.
We assume the commissioners listening.
Yeah, and, and listen away.
We assume the commissioners listening and watching, so we're speaking to the commissioners.
Yeah.
And again, that was the result of there being issues with student privacy.
Don't suck the joy out of it.
Specific to board meetings, there was no guidance specific to the other events that we talked about, which is why I had to wish you weren't saying, um. I don't want to open that door.
Yep.
I'd like to address the one that we have to travel through.
Alright, well, we all get it, so. Alright, budget transfers, can I, anything we need to show here?
We do like budget transfers, love them.
Board meeting is going to be all about budget transfers. We all set?
Yep.
Well, then let's move into the upcoming district committee meetings, good news, there aren't yet. So how about the upcoming district events? Tomorrow, Juneteenth, no school for all students. High school regions exams 20th through 25th. UPK graduation highlights, uh, June 23rd. Elementary school report cards will be available June 25th. End of 40 weeks will be June 27th. Middle, uh, the high school graduation, looking forward to that, June 27th. And then the middle school and high school report cards will not be available until July 19th. Closing items, Board of Ed highlights.
We have Board of Ed. We have a formal Board of Ed, that's what I should say, usually it's very.
Thank you. Do you want to go first, Patricia? Jeanne, as you prepare to close this, close this chapter of nearly a decade of service on the Board of Education, most notably as its president. On behalf of the Williamson Central School District, we extend our deepest gratitude to you regarding the way you have led leadership and commitment to this district. Your tenure has been marked by resilience, courage, and a steadfast dedication to the well-being of our students, staff, and community. Through challenging financial and budget times, you never shy away from bold and brave conversations you saw before tonight a couple minutes ago. Who knew, student celebrations. And this year, those included the possibility of engaging in a merger study to ensure the longtime fiscal responsibility of this district. In rural school districts like ours, the school is often referred to as the heart and heart of the community. This sentiment is more than just words in your case, because the truth, you have lived every day through your tireless advocacy and deep investment in the students' families here in Williamson. Your services now only shape the direction of the district, but you've also inspired those of us who have been privileged to leave and serve beside you. Thank you for the time, your energy, your integrity that you brought to this role and for me, for the opportunity to serve under your great influence. It has been an honor and a pleasure, one wishes for the next chapter.
Whatever, that would be.
I am on my way to my goal.
So I'm going to continue with the long, first thing, and thank Fran for, uh, putting that together. Um, but not only have you served on the board for nine years, but you've been our board president for eight of those. And you've worked with three different superintendents and seven different board members in that time. Uh, your unwavering commitment and tireless dedication to Williamson have left a lasting impact on the district. And I can list all kinds of examples of that. And you significantly contributed to the amount of our students our staff and our community. Your own deep roots in Williamson have grown a little bit deeper since you've been on the board as you work to cultivate our core values and help to ensure that the future is bright for Williamson. It's students that are here currently and those that are coming in the future. Your inspirational leadership and strategic vision have guided us through many challenges with an unwavering focus on doing what's best for our students and our community. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I would like to express our deep appreciation to you for your many years of service and self-assedication to Williamson. Simply put, you didn't have to do what you did the past nine years, but we are all grateful. And you have good work.
The base of the apple that's not attached. The real one's coming.
Very well.
The real one is coming soon, to thank Billy. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, time for everybody, separate mids. Thank you all. I, um, would just like to say that, uh, it's better to meet tonight to be sitting here by our board meeting. It is time for me to give those $400 back to my family, who has supported me through all of these years to make sure I could be here to support our community. Without, uh, support of my family, I could not have done this. Uh, I also would be remiss in not thanking all of you for your support. This is one of the most joyous things I have done, will also be one of the hardest things I have done. And I love this district, I love this community, I love you all. Um, I, uh, I, I applaud all of you who are continuing on because this is good work and you're here because the kids matter. Also make sure every decision that you make, continue to be that ones, doing what's best for the kids. Thank you all. Thank you for making me cry. And now I have to read the public comment paragraph. I love so much. The Williamson Central School District Board of Education invites public comment at this time. Matters on the agenda at this meeting, please leave your comments in two minutes or less. The Board of Education has allotted 10 minutes for public comment prior to the adjournment of the meeting. Your remarks may be provided to the board if time expires before a speaker completes your remarks. Guest individuals, state their names, specific agenda items you wish to address prior comments, and to provide to the district clerk with your contact information for purposes of follow-up. Although the board will not respond directly to individual comments at this time, items brought to the attention of the board may be taken under consideration for future response, action, or follow-up with the speaker. Issues related to specific district students or employees, other positive things or neutral must be brought to the attention of superintendent school privately in order to safeguard privacy. The board reserves the right to turn against speakers' comments. If their comments are in excess of two minutes, are repetitive, or are not appropriate for discussion in open public forum. All visitors are reminded to abide by the district code of conduct with respect, from pretty as both as speakers and as audience members. We're a community focused on bettering public education for our students, symbol of meaning. Do you have any public comments? I'm going to start, I should start asking, is anybody going to speak tonight?
Yeah, we'll start this.
Thanks. Uh, I don't think we have an elective session this evening, so I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Oh, okay, what? Oh, yeah, um, another one? Another date? Yes. Okay. So I would like to ask for a chief adjourn.
Second?
Someone.
Second?
All right. We are adjourned, thank you everyone.